Air recording has begun.
Okay, thank you. Good evening to everyone. I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. At this time, Commissioner Hudnill, leave us in a pledge of allegiance. First item on the agenda, the approval of the amendments. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes? All right.
Yes.
Yes.
I move that we approve the meeting minutes of September seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four as presented.
Okay, is there a second?
Mr. Chairman, not a second.
Okay. I'll begin the call. Councilwoman Brown Ward. Okay. Commissioner Hudnill.
Yes.
Commissioner Banks.
Yes.
Commissioner Ha.
Yes.
I am also a yes, and the minutes are approved. Next item on the agenda is the staff report from the Charles County, on the Charles County Public Library.
Good evening, for the record, I'm Sylvia Craze. I am the contract certified planner for the town of La Plata, filling in until the planning director's position can be filled. It's a pleasure to be here this evening. You have before you an application for a waiver to reduce the number of parking spaces at the proposed La Plata County Library from one hundred and eighty-three to eighty-one. The staff has reviewed this extensively and considered the arguments. But the applicant has failed to demonstrate a hardship by providing the required parking cannot be accommodated on the site. The approved site plan clearly shows adequate parking, meaning the criteria to qualify for a waiver has not been met. It is therefore recommended that the parking waiver be denied.
Okay. At this time, I'll ask for questions. I'll start with Councilwoman Brown Ward.
Thank you, Chairman Sampson. Ms. Craze, in the past, we have heard multiple times from the former planning director that our, the number of parking spaces that we were requiring was more than what most, you know, industry standard. And we've never denied based up on hardship. So can you tell me where the guidelines are that says that we can deny this this, this exception based upon hardship?
Um, hardship is not clearly defined, but hardship is generally meant to be something associated with the land, property itself that prohibits the compliance with the zoning ordinance. So as they're on the site plan, it clearly shows that there is adequate space. The town purchased the additional space for the purpose of having the parking lot. That there is therefore no hardship.
And, and does our code state that the exception has to be based up on hardship? Does our code address hardship in the, as, as a waiver?
That's state law.
But does our code?
Our code is silent with respect to the parking waiver.
Okay, and so because our code is silent, and I think I read that, we revert back to state law?
It's always advisable to go to state, it's not state law, it's state case law that determines what a hardship is.
Thank you.
I have a question, clarification actually. Am I in order?
Go ahead, go ahead.
I, I thought I read in the staff report that the parking lot is intended not just for the library, but for other uses as well, correct?
That's the reason that the town purchased the land.
Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Meniski? Commissioner Hudnill? Commissioner Banks? Commissioner Ha? Okay, I had several questions.
Okay.
All right. The first one is just a statement and not a question. There is a disconnect on what we referenced and what's in the waiver. We referenced on the town code, which is available to the public on the public website, one ninety-one forty-three, but that's actually dealing with temporary uses and structures. The appropriate code is one ninety-one dash forty-four. And the reason that stuck out is because when I reviewed the parking waiver, it actually references that. So that's something. I know you just got here, so it has nothing to do with you. But it's something that we need to look at because we're actually referencing the wrong, either the wrong code on our form or our waiver, or we're referencing something wrong on our website, meaning it's out of order on the website.
I'll investigate that tomorrow.
Okay, so that's a one thing that stood out to me. The next thing is the clarity of the, our parking request waiver. I notice that in, I believe it's the second paragraph under section E, or section F, we reference the first paragraph. That paragraph, to me, was not clear because it talks about table nine requirements, which appears to be dealing mostly with off-street parking. Now, I can see where it could also deal with onsite parking, but the way it's written, I could see where the confusion is at.
Yes, I'm not following section F or...
So if you go to one ninety-one dash forty-four.
I'm afraid I don't have that, the code in front of me.
I'll see, yes, I guess.
Thank you.
Off the webpage in our town code, you can see there's two paragraphs. The first paragraph referenced the table, cultural institutions and all that. The second one just talks about the applicant has to demonstrate that the amount of spaces are not necessary. So when you're reading those, and I'm not saying that that changed anything, I'm just saying that for future references, it wasn't clear to me that we're referencing or making a distinguish, or we're distinguishing between the two paragraphs, or if the author meant for the two paragraphs to be one and the other. So no action, I'm just saying that for future reference.
I will take care of that tomorrow.
Okay. And then there was three issues or three fundamental issues on this application that I saw. And I'll make this quick. But basically, the question that I had, I'm just going to sum up my three issues in one question for the sake of time. The town, and it appears the county slash developer, made this agreement back in, I think it was May of two thousand and twenty-one. They're asking for this waiver request. But what I want to know is, since we state that we bought the property with the intent, was there ever anything in writing, and you may not be aware of this because you weren't here or just got here, but are you aware of anything in writing that shows the intent of that land that the town purchased? I mean, was it clear or spelled out in writing in the MOU or MOA?
That was brought out to me by the town attorney in his review of my staff report so that I could make that clear, that the, and that that would amplify the reasoning behind the denial.
Okay, so there is something in writing that you've seen or?
Not that I've seen, I'm working on the advice of our town attorney.
Okay, because that, that was concerning to me because if there was something in writing, because I don't believe any of us were here at this time, then that could cross over into a legal situation or something. So I just wanted to be aware of that. Let me see here. And what is the harm if we were to approve the request? What is the harm to La Plata?
The harm would be, I think there are two things that come to, come to mind. The first is that the town is ignoring the requirement for hardship. And that could set precedence for future waivers. So I think the waiver has to be looked at strictly according to the standards that are contained in the zoning ordinance. The other harm would be the, it would deprive the town of what the town has determined to be necessary parking.
Okay. I just have one, maybe two more things, and then I'll see if anybody else has any follow-up questions. Based on my reading of this, and I need you to tell me if my reading of this is wrong, so I'm asking for your professional opinion. The way I read this, the town made an agreement when they purchased the land with the, from the county, okay? It is clear to me, although we have not seen anything in writing showing the actual intent that all the parties had an understanding, but I will defer to you working with the town attorney on that, because beyond our scope. Though I am, I am uncomfortable with that. It is clear to me, though, that the county slash developer has a similar or like understanding of that intent because they're requesting a waiver, which shows they understand that they are obligated, okay? Based on that obligation that they agreed to, because they're coming back to us for a waiver, I do not see harm in denying the request to us. But the issue is not the hardship that you're referencing, is where I understand it, is that there's an agreement of which they've affirmed in writing by coming before us to ask for relief. Am I missing something?
No, the hardship would be if, say, they were not able, or the town was not able to purchase the land, and then they physically could not put one hundred and eighty-three parking spaces on the lot that they had available, and that that's what was required, then the hardship would be argued to be that the site was too small to accommodate the required parking and the library. And the solution then would be to reduce the size of the library. And at that point, you start coming into, is that in the public's best interest to reduce the size of the library to provide additional parking?
And the last question I have before I see if anybody has any last minute follow-ups here is since the land in question was county land at first, are you aware, or does anybody know, it's like I said, we weren't here then, and I couldn't find the documentation, did the county, according to their code or anything, have any concerns about the environmental nature of that area? Because I saw they brought it up in Vista, I thought it was a meritless statement. I mean, I think on page three of that letter, I thought their claim was meritless, but I want to know, did they bring up any concerns? Are you aware of that? You may not be.
I looked into it, I didn't find merit in that argument. Although there is overall a general practice, say, in approving new developments to reduce the amount of parking just to reduce the impervious area and the runoff associated with it. That would be the environmental impact that you would be looking at.
Okay, I'll go around one last time to see if anybody has any follow-up questions. Councilwoman?
I do, thank you, Chairman Sampson. So in this documentation, you, you're referencing a hardship. They're not requesting it based upon a hardship, they're basically, they're requesting it based upon the fact that the number of spaces we are requiring in our code is too much, and we've made exceptions in the past. So I'm trying to understand, and you said we don't want to set a precedence, well, we have, we've done it multiple times, and we never ever brought out the issue of hardship. We based up, we made it based upon the thought that the number of spaces we were requiring was in excess, and we were going to review that. So if we take that into consideration, is their request justified? This is the first time, and I've sat on this council since two thousand and eighteen, I believe, and I've never, when we've had someone request a park, a parking waiver, ever have we ever used the rationale of hardship? And is that what they're making this request based upon a hardship? And I didn't see that.
That's because there is no hardship.
Because they didn't request it based upon hardship, they based, they requested it because our code allows it, and they're saying that the spaces that we are requiring are too many. So how do we come back and deny it based on hardship when that wasn't the request?
It wasn't a request, it's a required finding.
Do you mind if I say something, Councilwoman? I think the, I think what Councilwoman is bringing up is the same issue I had when I think through it. That is where a written document that we could look at, on what was actually agreed to, that showed the understanding of the parties, would resolve. Because that was the issue I had, is that we're being asked to vote on something of which we don't know what was agreed to and what was the understanding. I understand, I'm making the assumption in good faith, they know they're obligated because they're requesting this. That is the only grounds I have to deny that they know they're obligated, they signed an agreement of which we haven't seen. That's the, but I just wanted to clarify that, I think that's where the issue comes in that. That's not your issue per se, but I just think that's the issue that we have.
May I pipe in on that?
Yes.
So my, my part of this, under the staff comments, is this line. It says, "When the town purchased the property at the county's request, on which the auxiliary parking lot was to be built, it was intended that the lot would serve not only the library, but the greater town of La Plata." And I think that's what we're all asking for, is where is the document that shows that?
I have to plead ignorance because I'm, wasn't here or wasn't part of that. I worked off of the town attorney's recollection. If this is something that the commission wants to see, I can certainly go back and research that and also correct the application and come back in January with more information and clarification on those items the chair brought up.
I, I mean, I think that's reasonable, because I just, I just questioned that line, and I wanted to, I was wondering where the documentation to support that section of the staff comments was.
Commissioner, any follow-up questions?
No questions.
I do, I, I just want to, while we await the additional request, I, I just want to clarify for my own purpose. The reason for the denial is twofold. The primary reason is because of the original intent of the purchase. The secondary reason for denial is because the company failed to demonstrate hardship, correct?
I would call them equivalent in weight. Because I do think the lack of hardship is a strong and unwavable, excuse me for using that term again, requirement, and that this applicant has failed to prove that. But providing the additional background that the commission requests would certainly provide the clarification to the statements contained in the staff report.
So in reading the staff recommenda, thank you, that was helpful. In reading the staff recommendations, it seemed that you did put them in some sort of sequential order. You said that the intent, the original intent of the, of the purchase, that was the priority of the town, and then you said finally, so I put that as a secondary justification for the denial. So that's, they don't appear in my reading to be of equal weight, but...
It's, it's my opinion that they are not of equal weight. And if the I'll leave it at that. I, I will certainly rework the staff report so that it clears up the questions that the commissioners are asking.
Okay. Commissioner Ha, any follow-up questions or?
No questions, thank you.
Anybody else? Do we have a motion on this matter? Okay, so this action item will be tabled until the next meeting.
Yes.
All right. All right. The next item on the agenda is the Planning Commission Rules and Procedures. There were two requests that came before me about our rules and procedures, and so our current rules and procedures allow me to bring this up in this meeting. If we want to vote on it now, we can, or we can vote on it next month. All right. So the first one. Oh, all right, thank you. And Councilwoman did clear up, it's for introduction, for me to introduce the matter at hand. All right. The first item. Let me make sure I read this correctly here. "It was requested about the possibility of including a standing agenda item for public comment." My understanding is that this action would bring us more in line with our council counterparts as far as allowing the public to speak during our meetings, and Councilwoman, you have a better understanding of this than I do, so if I'm out of order or misspeak or misspoken, you can clear it up.
Yeah, well, thank you, Chairman Sampson, that came from, I think, Councilmember Jenkins, not me. Councilmember Jenkins thought that it would give an opportunity, that's definitely not right, for the public to come in and weigh in on conversations, but I don't know of any other commissions where the public comes in and has a part of the conversation, and if it's best practice, if it's done anywhere else for the Planning Commission to have a standing space on their agenda for the public to come in and have public comment, do you know if that's a best practice?
Rob Bobbly, oh, okay, I'm gonna go and leave him a little bit, okay?
Probably bleed over, I don't think they realize we could hear enough.
Sorry, Kelly. And neither of them have opportunities for just open days for the public to come and give comment.
Okay. And then the second one was it was suggested the approval of the meeting agenda. If you could speak to that one, I think you could do it more eloquently than I can, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Chairman Sampson, it, it is standard that Robert Rules of Order, when you have an agenda that's presented, that everybody reviews the agenda and makes sure that they're on the same page, and they approve the agenda as presented, or they want to make an amendment or an addition to it. So I, I see no problem with us doing what Robert Rules of Order states, that we approve the agenda. But that's, that's acceptable.
Okay.
It's a best practice.
Is everybody at least clear on those two requests? All right, so the agenda today calls for us, called for me to introduce those, which I did, and then we can make a decision the next meeting about that, and I had misspoke earlier. All right. Let me see. So next on the agenda is matters of information.
Thank you. A condominium which was approved on North Maple Avenue, it is, it's a land condominium. There are already existing structures on it, so it divides the property into essentially two different buildings and but because this was done via condominium, it did not have to go through subdivision. And this, actually, the subdivision had already been created to create the the subject master plat per se, and the condominium then creates the two subservient parcels. So this is just for your information.
Any questions about anyone?
Chairman Sampson, I'm sorry, can you say that again? You're bringing it to us for our information, what's the issue?
There is no issue, this is just, it's an interesting way of subdividing without subdividing. It's using the condominium plat process to create two different properties. And because this is unique, and it's you, we're generally aware of using the term condominium to deal with buildings and units within the building, which are condominium units. This is actually creating condominium properties. So it is a unique request. It doesn't require subdivision because the property is already subdivided. And the, at this time, there's no ownership issue. This would allow the current owner to sell off the two properties as individual properties.
Is there some documentation that I'm missing? Does something come up?
Nothing came up, this is just being, trying to be proactive and bringing in matter to the commission. In the events, somebody was to bring up the fact that on North Maple Avenue, there was a condominium- on North Maple Avenue, there was a condominium, and you knew nothing of a condominium on North Maple Avenue.
Thank you, I have a question. So what is the, what, if any, would be the role of the planning commission? And what's the timing, if you're aware of that?
The plan, planning commission has no role because this is not going through subdivision. The plat has been signed and recorded. So the process is complete to create the condominium. As I said, this was just being brought to the commission's attention in the event that you were questioned on it, that you would be aware that there was actually a condominium of land created that did not go through the subdivision process.
So it's just a net YI, okay, thank you.
Any other question? So next on the matters of information, we have the Planning Commission elections.
Yes, I believe perhaps Ms. Vips can opt in on this, but I was advised that the planning commission is due to elect a new chair and vice chair.
Yes, that is correct. According to the rule, I think it's the first month of each year there is an election. So...
So if it's the first month of each year, then it will be on the January agenda.
I didn't know if there was something in addition to that that the, that you all had to state. All right. The next one is the Board of Charles County Commissioners' Public Hearing on Proposed Amendments to Charles County Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan?
Yes.
What is that pertaining to?
It's an informational item that the Charles County is going through, changing the water and sewer classifications for several properties.
Okay, is there any direct or indirect impact to the town La Plata, or is this just informational purposes?
It's just informational.
So there's no direct or indirect impact?
No.
Okay.
So just to ask a follow-up question to that, will this have any, will this provide any update in terms of where we are with respect to our water availability?
Well...
A separate discussion?
Usually when you go through and change the water sewer classification, it is to improve your opportunity to obtain water in public sewer. How this relates to the water capacity for Charles County and whether that or not, whether or not that will impact the town, I don't know. I will have to investigate that further.
That would be helpful, thank you.
Okay.
And I'm assuming where it says North Maple Land Condominium again is just a reprint by accident or error, since you've already discussed it? Or is there something different?
No, that's, that's just a reprint.
Okay. Any questions on the matter of information before we move on? Any follow-ups? Okay, next on the agenda is the council updates, the Councilwoman?
No updates, but I really hate you guys didn't get to come to the Planning Commission conference. It was really great, it was good information, the best conference I think I've attended since being on the Planning Commission. Great information, totally different. Hope you guys get to come next year.
Okay. Any last questions, comments from anyone? All right, then I call this meeting adjourned.